Going down to Action 9 in the fore, deliberation decision on planning and zoning's commission recommendation of findings of facts through annex Mountain Bound Custom Storage RV Park. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Stokes.
Could we have Ms. Cherry get a summary or synopsis of this project? Mr. Cherry?
Of course, Mayor. So, really quick, so the applicant, I want to note, they were able to make their planning and zoning hearing. However, they are out of town, they're based out of Lake Havasu. They're gonna be joining us via Zoom. I'm just gonna bring them up, I have them waiting in the room. They've been watching it on YouTube, I'm pretty sure they're super excited. And with us representing the applicant, we have Mr. Ryan Rodney.
That him too.
Hi, Brock.
Hey, Ryan, how's it going, buddy?
I'm doing well, how are you?
We're doing good, so, we're getting some speaker interference. So, if you just stay on mute, we'll see your face, and we're gonna use this for the volume, and I'm gonna put this next to the speaker.
Okay, let's see if I can go back into the room, I thought it might have been something on my end, which it probably is.
No worries, Ryan, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give a brief synopsis, and then I'm gonna turn it over to you, sound good?
Sounds great.
Alrighty. Mayor, City Council, what you have before you is an annexation and planned unit development application for the Mountain Bound Custom Storage and RV Park. What is proposed, everyone is familiar with the Wilson forty-six acre property, south of Johnson Brothers, the hotels we have. On that property is being proposed to be built two-hundred-and-thirty-four RV parks slash storage pads. This is, has some key differences than a traditional RV park, those are differences I will let the applicant elaborate on. However, I wanna speak to some just key major points. Along with that, the proposed development is to have a convenience store, a laundry mat, a fitness center, a maintenance building, a main office building, community pool, sports courts, children's play area, and dog area. They are seeking a PUD, but for the most part, they meet all the general standards that we have. We were looking through once again what their key deviations are, and essentially it was signage. Our sign code isn't friendly towards this type of development. But regardless, the applicant, they wanted to do a PUD because they understood it was a different type of product, and they wanted both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council to be able to review the request with the utmost discretion. So, the items, or the item which I want to just make sure the details are given straightforward on, which I believe that the conversation will end up sur- which the conversation will end up surrounding is traffic. We know that in February, we saw Loves, they were interested in annexing, they did a traffic impact study, note that the applicant has done a traffic impact study as well. They have submitted that to ITD for review, and they have provided official response. As part of their review, they took into consideration other development which is happening in the area. Not to speak in any way on behalf of Johnson Brothers, but they have expressed interest of expanding their operations and building another hotel. So, in order to give you the best information possible, that was included in the TIS evaluation that ITD did. So, and the mayor and I, we both had the opportunity to discuss this with ITD, and essentially, this is what ITD is calling for right off the bat. They have to build a right-in lane into the development. That's what they have to do. What ITD is recommending, and I'll clarify more on this, is the applicant will not be able to build more than a hundred-and-fifty units until the following happens. They will have to restrict the US twenty and Foothills access, that's the access we have, so we can go to Wingers, KFC, what have you from US twenty. That's gonna have to be a right-in, right-out, and left-in, looking at a median. And, as was discussed with previous developments, the developer and other associated parties will be responsible to provide a connector road east of US twenty which connects Worth Lee Road to the north and Foothills Avenue, along with a traffic light there. Those improvements cannot be at Foothills Road because it's too close to the interstate. That is the reason for the improvements further north. The ITD, when they were giving their evaluation to city staff, initially they said, "Well, technically, we ran our models, how they got there?" I'm not an engineer, they had the stamp, they said, "Maybe three-hundred before these improvements have to be made, but we understand there's other development happening, and we don't wanna give any one developer up there all the keys to the castle." So, we would recommend this group having a one-hundred-and-fifty mark, so they can't strong-arm other potential developments associated with Johnson Brothers and vice versa. That both of them will be the opportunity to do some build-out before there is complete build-out. Note that Johnson Brothers is a supporter of the project, they came in very early on, and they were a party, when we were here in February, they opposed the annexation for what was being proposed with Loves. Conversations have been good as far as talks of improvements, and everyone coming in to help with those associated costs. It's a little bit of everything, we have impact fees for roads, that can certainly be applied for projects like that, if they're named on the CIP. That's important to note, but I believe both parties are at the understanding that to ultimately get what they ultimately want, no one's going to have a full build-out, we have to come to the table. I can tell you, at this time, we don't have an official development agreement between the city and between the parties at large. I think it's kind of what comes first, the chicken or the egg, are those agreements that you seek to enter into before you seek entitlement? I don't know if that's the best route forward, but I think that's important for this body to know, that right now, even though we know that those improvements are needed, we don't have anything formally read or acknowledged, besides the memo we have from ITD and the applicant giving their base acknowledgement. So, with that, I'm going to, if you see if it merits to allow the applicant to do his presentation, and then allow the City Council to answer or have any questions you see fit.
Can I ask the council before we get into, do you guys have any questions? I mean, it's pretty straightforward, do you guys want to do a presentation? I mean, it's...
This is awesome.
So, do we, in the sake of, I'm not trying to rush anything, I just, I just want you-
I don't need a presentation.
Do you need a presentation?
I don't think I do.
I'm good.
Okay.
Real quick, Mayor, I just wanna make sure we're doing it correctly, does the applicant have any right?
Would you like to make a presentation?
Say anything?
I would just like to thank everybody for the opportunity for us to bring our business, our concept, and our use to the beautiful city of Mountain Home. We're very excited to get started, we have an appetite to begin construction as soon as possible. I think that there's some great opportunity to accommodate all of the growth that the city is going through, and I believe that what we'll be bringing is something fresh and exciting. So, ultimately, just ready to get started, we are ready, and eager, and willing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was your name again, sir?
Ryan.
Ryan?
For the record, my name is Ryan Rodney, founder and CEO of Mountain Bound Custom Storage and RV Park.
Alright, council, you got any questions for him? Councilman Brennan?
I think it's a great product, a lot of people passing through the area bring a big benefit. Brock made mention of a development agreement in his opening remarks, and I feel that that's very important to begin with. I'll probably make a real controversial statement here that, you know, I'd like to stand on my own, but I just, I wanna point out that, well, let's see here, I think I know the roadways in Mountain Home better than headquarters Idaho Transportation Department. In terms of access, I live here every day, I work the streets every day, and this is my home, and that intersection of US twenty and Foothills Roads is a disaster as it is already, or, sorry, it's a disaster already without adding additional spaces or businesses up that road. For, I would imagine, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the majority of the vehicles coming in and out of here might be equivalent in size to an eighteen-wheeler with a full-size truck and a giant fifth wheel coming into park, some may be smaller. But that, I don't know how to stress it enough, is that I think we need to have immediate secondary ingress and egress, whether, to Fort Lee or, what's the other name, Hot Creek Road. So, Brock, what's your recommendation here for, if we could discuss a development agreement that says, you know, as they're starting to break ground? How else do we gain that, gain a safe, secure place to the highway, because the more backed up it is, the more crashes we're gonna have. And, it talks about agreements with the pilot across the street and cutting off some of their access because of a median in the middle. And, kinda, not the elephant in the room, but another piece of this pie is the hotel, so, a hundred-and-fifty-room hotel on top of that that they're considering. So, giant big rigs with hotel traffic daily, I'm just not willing to proceed as-is without a secondary ingress and egress. Maybe we talk about a Lake Kemmerer's Agreement, and this, maybe a three-way agreement between the city and Mountain Bound and the Johnson Brothers for hotel building? That's the only way you're gonna get me to proceed, I love the project, it's fantastic here, but safety and the flow of the road has to be right up there at the top.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Garvey?
I cannot agree with Councilwoman Brennan more, especially on, I know this shocks you. On holidays, I know everybody taking notice, on holidays, that intersection, that whole area is a disaster. The traffic backs up on the freeway going east and west, I have to agree that I think we need a plan of traffic flow before we add more to the issue.
So, you're, are we still moving all that swapping land for the road, putting it against the BLM ground, getting it up to Hot Creek Road?
That's our plan.
When?
Well, we have to get this on the green, and that's where this is all coming from, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Stokes.
I would agree.
Wait, wait, sorry. Are you done?
Oh, I'm done, yes.
Okay, sorry.
Councilman Stokes?
I think this product is good for the location, but I would second and third Councilwoman Brennan and Councilwoman Garvey's concerns. The thing that's scary for me is, as you read the number the ITD put down, that one-fifty, and then I look at their phases, they can basically get to phase four without doing any real egress or secondary egress, ingress, whatever. Can we be more stringent on that number and maybe go down to forty-nine or one, perhaps? Just to make it safe for the citizens, it is already a cluster up there, and we don't want any major accidents. And we're not talking about small vehicles here, we're talking big trucks carrying heavy RVs and boats and maybe jet skis, I don't know. But you get my concern, ITD put that number in, and frankly, I don't know, I don't think they know shit about our traffic situation. I would, I think Councilwoman Brennan has a better grasp on it than they do.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate the support.
Hey, I supported you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Garvey? Sorry, go ahead, Brock.
So, I believe that, like I said, the juncture when we go through firm development agreements before someone has the entitlements, you know, it's one of those things ideally that they can't happen simultaneously in an event like this. I can tell you that just today, we had a meeting with an individual, where the property up, we have another piece of property up there that's on contract, where the improvements here would also be benefiting towards that property. So, I think, you know, outside of this entity and also Johnson Brothers, that there's the opportunity to potentially grab other new development that's happening, to try to create as much of a proportionate share of just what we're able to do. I can tell you tools that this body has, as far as what we could doing forward. We could base the approval on a development agreement that you get one phase, you get fifty, you get eighty, whatever that number is, before we have an approved development agreement of how these requirements or improvement are gonna come to fruition. And know also, right now, we're having active applications with the hotel who doesn't have any zoning entitlements, they just need a building permit.
Can I interrupt, Mayor?
Councilwoman Garvey?
So, can I interrupt you really quick, so, what I'm hearing you say is that we could put together something possibly before this development gets to any stage past, say, three, whatever, could we work out something that Mountain Bound Development gets with Johnson Brothers now and starts putting together something? I mean, I know that's kind of taken on Mountain Bound, but I just think it's really important that we have something in there. And if Johnson's Brothers are going to build a hotel which they have voiced, why wouldn't that be a good starting point?
So, upon annexation, as you know, annexation is the biggest bite of the apple. It would be an annexation agreement, that that was the expectation. So, those are planning tools, I can tell you from the economic development side, it was my experience with Loves, speaking to this property owner, what have you, they need to build something in order to have monies for those improvements. And again, I don't know what that is, I can tell you, that's what I've been told, we can ask the applicant about what that means, but if we were to say this whole thing has to be built to both the applicant and potentially Johnson Brothers, before you build any new hotel or what have you, I believe some responses that we could get is, well, how are we supposed to build for those funds? For an area which all of us have been there, which is already kind of broken, as it is now, how are we supposed to put something forward with nothing there? And again, I don't have the magic number, I don't know if we allow fifty, I don't know if we allow sixty, and I just defer to ITD because I'm not a traffic engineer. They have a stamp, they have a code of ethics, when people get hurt when crashes happen, they are the liable party, they're the approving entity. That's all I have for you, unfortunately.
I've been up here long enough to know that, as much as everyone is subject matter expert, I'm not a subject matter expert in traffic counter studies. I trust the traffic engineers, we have a phenomenal relationship with ITD, and that's been culminated of work after work after work. Some of the places that should not have had access, we've been able to grant access, whether it's a kidney bean or a right-in, right-out with ITD. They wouldn't have given their okay, I would, we've been there where they say no, and it is a no until the, you know, so... And I understand everyone's concern, and maybe, you know, right now what we've done is we've cut a circle up by the Hampton so the truck traffic can come up and around, and I understand everyone wants to take a left there. Maybe you make that a right-in, right-out right now only, right where the, it's not City View Drive, what is it?
No, it's further up.
What is it?
Foothills.
Hot Creek?
Foothills, Foothills Road, you know what I mean, and then they go up and flip around. I'd hate to see this development not go, just like the Loves didn't go because of the very same issue. That's just my two cents, I'm not, like I said, and in all fairness with ITD, they have, they have really worked well with Mountain Home, they've given us things that they probably, they probably shouldn't have, but having that relationship with them is a good one because obviously their first role is to get traffic through, as fast as possible, right? Second one is what, economic development? And they've worked with us really-
Safety is their first.
Safe, yeah, so, I just want you guys not to beat them up so hard, they have worked with us quite considerably, and they've been good stewards to the city of Mountain Home in helping us get economic development going.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Stokes?
And the way I read this, it says, "No more than one-hundred-and-fifty RV storage pads shall be constructed without the following improvements." And it goes on to say subsection US twenty and Foothills Avenue be restricted to a right-in, right-out, left-in intersection. And then, within that section, this is where they talk about, "This will require discussion with surrounding business owners." ITD is basically saying, you have, if you wanna complete this project, you have to work with business owners or surrounding property owners. And that's where I'm just not sure that the one-hundred-and-fifty pads is the right number. For me, I'd like to see them get one or two phases through, that's okay, but to do three or four would be a little bit much for me.
Sorry, councilman.
Yeah, okay.
So, if Johnson Brothers wanted to build a hotel right now and it being zoned the way it is, they could build their one-hundred-and-fifty-
They can do it.
And without, without anything, because it's already zoned in, all that good stuff, right?
I would consult with legal, but I don't have a zoning mechanism that I can tie them doing something to.
So, how we got the one-hundred-and-fifty is we wanted Johnson Brothers and this applicant to work together. They, ITD was gonna give them all two-hundred-and-fifty units, or three-hundred, sorry. But we asked the applicant, and we asked if we could, we asked ITD, would it be alright to have them work together? I think that's what we're trying to do.
Mayor, I would hate to see this project go down also based on our problems in our city, they're wanting to come to our city. So, I would say, hopefully, if the council agrees, I stick with the one-hundred-and-fifty with diligent work on that agreement. I'm sorry, what'd you call it, the-
Development agreement?
Yes, excuse me, yes, the development agreement, to fix this problem, so that it's not, it's not, it's not Mountain Bound's problem that we have this issue. But we do have a problem up there.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Rich.
Mayor, council, I do know that Johnson Brothers actually is working on it, because I have talked with their engineers that's working on a road up there. So, they're working on trying to figure out things, it's BLM land, it's a lot of runoff that the rain comes off that, so, there's a lot of engineering, they gotta figure out what's going on. So, they are working on that, so, we have been in discussions of what's going on, so, just-
And I want you councilmen and councilwomen, sorry, council members, sorry. Know that we do have, we already have it plotted, if you look at our plat maps, what we're trying to do is literally move it to BLM, and that way they all have frontage, I guess, property, right? Move that to the back end of the fence, and go on from there, I guess. It is a plan, it just seems like nothing happens overnight, and nothing's perfect. Mayor?
Councilman Brennan? Did we influence ITD's traffic impact study by negotiating with them, is that what you're saying?
We asked.
For like, are you seeing like one-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-and-fifty versus one getting all?
I wouldn't say influence, we asked the question, and it's up to them, at the end of the day, they're the yeses and noses, you know, they tell us what we can and can't do. So, that, see the road right there, we're wanting to move it to the BLM side and go right there. And that way, it makes the property values better, not only for everybody, but it-
They can utilize the land better to get a hotel up there and other things.
Better fire barrier, having that roadway.
Mayor?
Councilman Brennan? I'm at the same accord, like, I don't, I don't want them to outright get denied, but we are talking annexation, and after annexation comes outright allowable things that they can do, so we kinda have the keys to the castle right now. But, as far as the phases or the development agreement, proceed, in my mind, proceed forward now, but the development agreement has to be, sorry, proceed forward to a certain extent now, but a development agreement has to be signed, sealed, and delivered upfront, so that there is a rock-solid plan that the developer knows, the city knows, Johnson Brothers knows that this is where we stand, and there will be no other development until it's done.
Hey, Randy?
Ryan?
Oh, Ryan, sorry, Rodney, I got Rodney, Ran, Jesus.
Just stop going.
Yes?
Do you understand where Councilman Brennan's coming from?
I absolutely do, and I just want everybody to know that we're fully prepared to pick up the capital cost, share in that cost, we're willing to do whatever needs to be done in order to satisfy the requirements. You know, I understand where you're coming from at the one-hundred-and-fifty, I will make a comment and say that the traffic impact analysis was conducted during the Memorial Day week and weekend, which according to our traffic study engineers, one of the busier weekends at that interchange. So, I take that for whatever it is, and I know that ITD had approximately three months to conduct their review and provide the memo documentation talking about the one-hundred-and-fifty. But I'm willing to meet somewhere in the middle, if, you know, we can find a way to, you know, get seventy-five to a hundred of our RV park buildings erected, that should put plenty of carrots in the bucket to where we can sit down and really start to consider the connection road from Foothills to Hot Creek, and then obviously the widening of Highway twenty. So, bottom line, if we can just find a way to get on the same page together and row this boat in the same direction, I think over the long term, I think it's gonna be a very profitable relationship, and I think it'll work out well. I just want everybody to know that I'm willing to, you know, put in the work and meet, you know, somewhere in the middle. I would, if it's anything like the highway improvements that we were required to do with the Arizona Department of Transportation, that was a pretty significant improvement, and I was a hundred percent in agreeance, I'm big on safety, I'm, you know, big on, you know, proper ingress and egress. So, I get it, a hundred percent, that was over a one-million, one-point-five-million-dollar project that we picked up. But before we had to do anything, we were kind of in, you know, the same scenario, we were kind of in between the boat and the dock trying to figure out, you know, how we could meet somewhere in the middle, and they allowed us to do Phase One, which was a hundred of the RV park buildings at our river-bound facility. That's pretty much the agreement that we arrived at with the Department of Transportation. They understood our position as the developers, and it worked out well. So, if, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and staff members, if we can take that into consideration as we move forward to approve the project, we'd be very appreciative of any consideration.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Stokes?
Ryan, you said somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred, my thoughts are ninety-nine. And I say that because, I say that, yeah, because you can get Phase One and Phase Two done, allows you to get some development in, and I understand your position as a developer, and I believe you understand our position as a council as a whole. So, that would be my kind of meet in the middle of that ninety-nine number.
I got you, forty-nine.
I think that sounds like a great deal.
I can go along with that, I can go along with Phase One and Phase Two.
Madam, Mr. Mayor, may I make one comment?
You bet.
I'm not commenting on substantively how this should be done, I'm only mentioning procedure- I'm only mentioning procedurally that um borrowing a little bit on what Councilman Brennan said. Annexation and once the entitlements are in place, it is now uh that an annexation slash development agreement. The terms of it have to be understood because that is what the conditions of approval are.
Right.
Um, it is routine uh that whether it's fifty units or seventy-five units or ninety-nine units or one fifty units that they could build, that they can be built and utilized before the traffic signal is, has to be put in place on Chindon Boulevard. You know, things like that, I've seen this a thousand times, that's no problem. However, at time of approval, at findings of fact that uh Brock's gotta draw up and then I draw up. We put the terms. This is where the turn lane is, this is where this is, this is where this is. So that, that is what the conditions of approval is. It can't, I cannot type something up where it says uh you could build a hundred and forty-nine or ninety-nine units and then you need to get together with your neighbors and try to figure something out. You no longer have jurisdiction, you no longer have any more approval periods. There's nothing more that Brock can do to require anything. So whatever it is, I don't mind that they could build um whatever it is substantively, however the number is, is irrelevant in my mind. It's procedurally the mechanism, now is when your conditions of approval come into place. And if your condition of approval is a development agreement or an annexation agreement, it's now that you have to see the terms of it. Now, it strikes me that you, we don't know everything yet, okay? But somehow there has to be a level of specificity in this, saying applicant, you, in order to build one lot, you have to agree that at ninety-nine lots or units, the following things have to be constructed. So the following things have to be itemized now. It can't say you need to get together someday down it and it, it, you provided, there's nothing that is quote unquote required. Uh, and so it's too wishy-washy. Uh, it isn't something that is a substantive requirement as a condition of approval for planned unit development.
Right.
So could I?
Is planned unit development?
Is planned.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Garby.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is somewhat was my question earlier. So we could do the approval with the development agreement in place, that was my question earlier. Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is we need to just add these little subsections that you can build ninety-nine. However, you have to provide an intersection and expansion and installing a connector road, et cetera.
Yeah, if there's.
And that's in our motion.
That is in your motion saying, I move to approve this PUD with the following conditions.
Okay.
Um, upon, on or before the ninety-ninth unit, the following uh infrastructure improvements must be constructed.
Okay.
If they don't, uh, you can't hold Johnson Brothers technically, if they, all they're doing is asking for a building permit.
I'll make a stab at a motion then.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Garby.
Are you not ready?
Let's, we, before the motions, maybe we gotta, we gotta talk about all the details, right? Like.
Do you have more questions?
The connector road and the intersection, the stoplight.
Hold on, bear with me, okay? And you may change my motion, or you may deny it. I make a motion that we approve annexation. Um, sorry, I totally lost my train of thought. Um, of the mountain bound custom storage RV park with the following conditions. Ninety-nine units can be completed. After ninety-nine units, we are asking the developer that.
Requiring.
Excuse me, requiring, excuse me. The developer will provide an intersection expansion by installing a connector road east of US twenty connecting Worthley Road, Hot Creek Road and Foothills Avenue to accommodate for the further expansion of his project. Any other additions?
Is that, pass the Paul Fitcher smell test?
I don't know. I said I'm not commenting on it substantively, so I don't know.
What's the council want?
I don't know what it is needed in there to alleviate the concerns that you have as to what is needed for all the.
That alleviates my concern.
In that case, then it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Stokes.
I would only comment to Councilwoman Garby that you read the second part. I'd like to see the whole thing within.
Okay, okay.
Uh, the requirements.
Well, that is already in there.
Yeah, she.
That is a requirement already.
About US twenty, so all your restrictions, right in, right out, left.
Jane, bear with me one second, okay, just so I don't lose my train of thought. We're changing B, section sixteen, item B. We're changing that to one hundred.
Ninety-nine.
Excuse me, ninety-nine, ninety-nine, I better write that down. Okay? I is already a requirement. On ninety-nine, I is a requirement, okay? Do you want me, I mean, I'll read it all if that will make you second this.
I wanted the whole thing.
I'll say it as it is. Cause it's already in the, um, just, you don't have to read them all out, but if you just.
Okay, I, I got it.
Identify it.
Okay, I would like to make, uh.
Has specific conditions of approval.
Okay. I would like to make a change to my motion to approve the annexation of mountain bound custom storage. Um, to change it to ninety-nine units at first buildout to include I under subsection sixteen and II as conditions to this development.
Mayor. Seconded. Seconded, uh, it's been a motion and second, any further discussion, Councilman Brennan?
I, I think we need to talk about a latecomers agreement so that they don't have to foot that bill entirely all by themselves and maybe I'm seeing it wrong, but with, with that motion, they're fully responsible for the entire road. Um, without being able to ask the hotel to show or any of, anybody else that comes in on that space.
They were already fully responsible anyway, regardless. If they wanted to do a hundred and fifty, they had to meet II and they were okay with that. You see what I'm saying?
Could, could we ask that when Johnson Brothers wants to build their hundred and fifty, this has already been cylinder annexed? I mean, we can't make them pay for that?
And what you, and what you can create um with all good intentions is you could create a scenario where they'll get to the ninety-ninth and then they'll just bag it. And then they're out, they'll tuck and run and get out of it because they can't compel uh the other parties to join in the latecomers agreement. Now, if there's somebody, if there's a player that's out, out there that.
It's a city road.
This is why you do the DA's beforehand.
Well, this is what I'm saying, that, that road that's going up there is a city road. The city can't mandate anybody that goes up there that utilizes that road if we.
We could do that independently uh as well. You can say, subject to a potential latecomers agreement, should any other development wish to do it? So if they're in the middle of it, uh, then you would have them uh take part of the burden away from them. But you can't say that their burden is only one-third or one-fourth or one-ninth or two-thirds. Because we don't know who the other players are necessarily.
He, they were under full agreement, as he said, that they will do whatever infrastructure is needed to complete the project. They're agreeing to our uh, what we're requiring as it is without working with anybody else, any potential future development. So I think it's a moot point.
How about this, just add to the very end of your motion, subject to potential latecomers.
Do I have to say all that whole thing again?
No, just say, all that, ditto, subject to latecomers.
Okay.
Which then will enable us sometime later down the road for some new application that comes in, that they will contribute part of that.
Okay, my motion.
It gives up more freedom.
My motion stands except for we are going to add subject to latecomers in the future.
Potential.
Potential latecomers in the future.
Mine's a motion too.
It's been motioned second, any further discussion, Councilman Brennan?
I, I, I like the direction that we're going, I, I think we're just jumping into it a little too fast. Um, because as it's been mentioned, all this is, we, we are agreeing to uh basically cut the pilot off. Or the language in here is a little hard for me to track. Um, but it will require a discussion with surrounding business owners. So what discussion has occurred already? Uh, what discussion could still be had? How can, how can all parties be in agreement with this so that their business is not getting cut off?
It's meaningless. Future discussions, blah, 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 it's meaningless. I mean, ITD put it in there, I get it.
And if they don't wanna do it, they don't have to do it.
Doesn't mean anything.
So aside from the discussions though, the first part of that paragraph is still in place, right? So a median, a median will be constructed and the road will be, you won't be able to turn left.
Yeah, the mayor's requiring us to, you and I to have discussions. Great, hi, hi, we're done. I mean, it's, it doesn't, unless somebody is asking something, an entitlement from us, i.e. one of those other parties, hence the latecomers. Then it's means, whatever that means.
Uh, could you put up a map of the, a close-up map, like Google map of this, of the intersection of US twenty pilot and all that? Can you zoom in on that? So the, the part where it talks about the, the median, um. So if you're coming west on US twenty towards the interstate, if I'm reading this correctly and maybe legal could help me understand it. The median they're saying means if you're coming west down the highway, you cannot turn into like basically the Chevron or Subway or Jack in the Box or the hotel or mountain bound RV, is that right?
That'd be my, it, I would be kinda, it's kinda the same thing as what happened when city, when Kmart subdivision started to develop. And they had to do their left into their property and everything had to be a median. Wal- Walmart had no say, that's, that's what happened. So that's, that's kinda the same thing.
But am I reading that right? Everybody coming down out, out of the mountains will not be able to turn into that entire road.
They won't be able to turn left into it.
But they'll be able to turn left at this light right here, go through here.
In how many years though? That me, when does the median get constructed, at ninety-nine with our motion or immediately?
For, for this development, that would have to exist before they build any further.
Okay, so immediately a median gets put in and maybe ten years down the road, then, then a, then they have the ability to turn down Hot Creek? We, we don't know when that road's gonna get built or when that intersection's gonna get constructed. That, that's not at all part of our motion, it says you have three years to build this intersection. You wanna say something so bad?
Are you available for public testing?
No, no, uh, we have it here in, at the very end, we have it in the very end.
Mayor.
I, I'm just not willing to proceed, to proceed with cutting all these businesses off.
You represent the applicant?
Oh, come on down, you need.
Someone in John Ramsa, um, I represent the Wilson sisters as well as mountain bound. Um, I represented uh Love's Travel Stop. I've been working on some of this property for seven years. So your traffic questions, I've been through it multiple times. The road that um this gentleman and Brock were talking about going up to the north.
Hot Creek.
Hot Creek, thank you. Started with Courtney Lewis. Uh, in February, Lowe's got a quote for that road, it's one point seven million dollars. So to put a relevant number to your discussion of what the applicant is willing to pay to get that feet of road north and south is one point seven million dollars. So what the regional director of ITD has said is that median would stop somebody from coming off of Foothills Boulevard going west and turning south. Would also prevent somebody coming south down the highway, excuse me, turning east on the Foothills Boulevard. So it's gonna affect everybody in that, it's gonna affect everybody on both sides. It's gonna force people to go up, up to uh leeway, do a U-turn and come back around. So you're taking the problem right here and moving it right up there. So as you've said, uh, councilman, about the, the traffic issues here, this median is just gonna move them up further to the north until this road right here is put in. I appreciate the latecomers, it's a great way to share this one point seven, which who knows what it'll be. With all these parcels are gonna benefit from that road because they're all gonna have the same access problems with ITD. So it's just, over seven years, it's been as, as frequently as loves. Who is going to start this ball rolling to get this road put in, excuse me, and this median put in? It has to start with somebody. And then everybody else will join onto it, but it has to start with somebody.
Well, can it start with the city? We build the road and as the attorney said. I can already see the answer to that. So the in- in- individual latecomers, when, when we annex or when we give building permits, that's part of the agreement. So, so we have a solution now rather than how many years down the road?
Is it okay if I sit here?
Yep. So here's my thing, and no, no, I, I think Rich and I are gonna probably say the same thing. We could put in the road right now and use our, all our chip seal, our old chips and roll it and it'd just be like a Smith Road. You know what I mean, we could do that. If, if that would make everyone, but we would maybe make that gentleman pay, just pay for the labor, we could put in the road.
Mayor, I do have a clarification, looking at this, I don't think that that median has to come in till they were at their hundred and fifty or like. So once, if they wanna go over, if they want a hundred, a hundred units, they would have to put the median in or have everything taken care of by them. So that, it's, it's up to the, there's no median for the first two phases if that's what you wanted to say.
So Idaho Transportation Department had a similar requirement of Love's, that Love's could build the travel stop. But until, and the next step was to build the two hundred and fifty thousand square foot distribution facility. The access road had to go in and the median had to go in before they build the warehouse. They could build the travel stop, but they couldn't build the warehouse. It was a very similar uh requirement from ITD. And I believe that's on the record of the application.
So Mayor, how fast, how fast could the city act and, and put that in, subject to our own latecomers agreement?
All we need really is to move, we have to get with those property owners, ask if we can move it to the, I guess that'd be the east. Street who could do that all day every day, huh, Rich?
Mayor.
Well, this is just a, for right now, we could just, you know.
Well then, can't we just drive on a dirt road then?
Touche. Anyway, so I, I got, um, I got, hang on one second. I got a motion and a second, any further discussion, Councilwoman Garby?
One last comment. Uh, first of all, we already lost Love's due to this issue, which would have been a huge economic impact. Second of all, um, we have an applicant that is already willing and ready to do this road and says that he is ready to take on this road. So I'm not sure why we are so concerned right now. Um, we, we want, we, this is, this would be a great development and he has stated clearly that he will pay for this road. Which will help Mountain Home greatly.
As far as. Council. Mayor. Hang on a second. Council, any further discussion? Councilman Brennan?
Can you, can you throw Ryan back up on the screen? I, I guess I just wanna hear that again. Ryan, did you, did you agree to fund that whole north-south road connecting to Hot Road, or Hot Creek?
Yes.
Okay, at what point?
Um, it was originally one fifty from ITD, but in light of uh our meeting today, it sounds like it's ninety-nine.
Okay, so at ninety-nine units, you'll do the full development of the road. But I guess the city has to get the rights to it first, right?
We just have to swap land.
They would just dedicate it, they'd have to get an easement dedicated unto us so it would become ours.
So, so, no, we already own the ground for that road. We have to get with the property owners to move it to the east.
Oh, cause we have the right of way already.
Yes. So, okay.
Okay, there you go.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'm gonna call for the question, Councilman Stokes. Hi, Councilman McCain.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brennan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Garby.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Run down to action item number five, deliberation decision on planning and zoning commission recommendation, findings of facts of zone I one Light Industrial PUD entitled Mountain Bound Custom Storage RV Park. Councilwoman Garby?
I don't have anything on it.
Councilman Stokes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Stokes.
All right, here's to be um right next to I one, which is Light Industrial.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Stokes.
And make the motion to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation and findings of fact to zone uh I one PUD entitled Mountain Bound Custom Storage and RV Park.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded, I'll call, or any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question, Councilwoman Garby.
Aye.
Councilman McCain.
Aye.
Councilman Brennan.
Now, at this time.
Uh, Councilman Stokes?
Aye.
All right. Run down to action item number six, deliberation decision on planning and zoning commission recommendation, findings of facts for preliminary plat request by Jennifer Love Day.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Stokes, mustard chair, give us a quick synopsis, and, um, if the applicant is here, we might wanna hear from him. Um, so this.
Tell Ryan bye.
Bye, Ryan, have a great night.
He doesn't wanna listen to our meeting anymore.
Probably doesn't. So, the.